We've got nine o'clock and we'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go.
Mockler.
Here.
Packard.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Manning.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Confluent of interest declarations. Hearing none. Approve agenda?
Move to approve.
Move second with the addition of a emergency management, the special project grant award.
It's okay with me.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion passes. Approve minutes from June twenty-second and June twenty-fifth.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All the same sign, motion passes. Are there any visitors to be heard? Hearing none. Fuel quotes for the highway department. It's like a little bit of Jerry's.
Yeah, I make a motion to take a little bit of Jerry's.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion passes. Twenty twenty-two budget discussion.
So I sent out just some kind of high-level overviews of the budget, what things kind of look like at this point. And just wanted to get some direction from you guys before I put together the whole packets for you to start budget hearings. None of these at this point include the opt-out that you guys had talked about doing or any cutting of any of the non-mandated programs. It was just a, you know, a quick put-together to see what things might look like.
So when you did the one like the six hundred thousand and the seven hundred fifty thousand, you're projecting that what we'd have left in there is like one is fourteen point six seven, the other one's like sixteen point something.
Yep. Yeah, that would be, and those, so the, I guess to back up, the first one that I included was, you know, if you did nothing. And then the second and third was if you did some combination of opting out or cutting or whatever, you know, in the amount of six hundred thousand, then that's what things would look like. So, and seven fifty for that second option. But yeah, it, you know, our cash balance, surplus cash would be right in that fourteen and a half, sixteen and a half percent, depending what you did there.
Which is probably lower than we've been. We haven't been down that low since I've been on it, I think. We've been using around that nineteen to twenty.
No, and that's not to say that things couldn't end up differently if, you know, we got a little bit more revenue or if we didn't spend the entire budget, which, you know, we'd never do. But you can't really count on that when you're preparing these things. So it's, could end up better at the end of the year.
Because the first one you're showing there is like, we'd end up with like six percent at the end of the year.
Nothing.
Right.
Basically nothing, yes.
We've been historically kind of hovering around that thirty to thirty-two percent.
Right. So if you were down in that six, and that's, that's not taking any surprises or anything.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so one question I had was, and I, you know, I'm new to the budget, so I'm sure I'm gonna have more questions than everyone else. There's a increase in spending built in, and it's about a little over a million dollars. Yeah?
And that's just comparing last year's budget number to what, you know, was proposed here, so.
Okay, and so six hundred thousand of that is prisoner board and transport, right? So that leaves like four hundred, one thousand or so, you know, that's added in, and I was trying to figure out where it is. I assume some of it's salary increases?
Salaries, health insurance, that's a really hard one to predict because we don't really know what our increase is gonna be until probably, you know, February-ish. And so that's a hard one. I always figure ten percent because there's years where we've had two percent and there's years where we've had fifteen percent for increases. So you just never know, and that's a hard one. Usually we come out good on that, but you never know. Rod's budget, yeah, Rod's budget increased about four hundred thousand dollars. And I mean, material costs are up, so I'm sure that's a huge part of that. But again, some of it's salaries, some of it's health insurance prediction, projections.
Anything else significant, or is that about it?
That's about it. I think everybody else pretty much held the line, you know, with the exception of the jail. And so, everybody else seemed like a, pretty, pretty much straight across the board.
And that's normal, you know, the others are almost pocket change after you, after you think in terms of, of the salary package, the med package, the med insurance package, and highways. Those are, those are the big players here. So the others don't make a huge difference. Well, Andy's got some good-sized items in there too.
Yeah.
Not to minimize those.
And so, so that, at the end of each fiscal year, on average, what does the, the cash balance increase look like? You know, the...
At the end, we've been hovering right around thirty percent.
Okay.
Yeah. And so even, you know, even the, the fourteen and a half or sixteen and a half percent, like, you know, it could end up better at the end of the year because we never spend our whole budget. But what if we had to, you know? But it usually ends up better than what I project here. But again, you just don't know. Sometimes we don't get all the revenue that we, and I try to project a little on the conservative side with the revenue because there, again, you never know either. But I did increase some things for next year that were trending higher. And then, of course, decreased the things like the jail boarding that we know we're probably not gonna have, so.
The other question I had was, what's the total cash reserves?
Total cash, it was usually, usually a couple million. It shows on that, so. Estimated cash balance on this, this end column here. And really what it's looking at when I look at the percentage is that statute that says we can't have more than forty percent. That one is what I'm really looking at there, so, yeah. Now, one other thing I think is worth noting too, when I did these projections, I also, and that estimated expenditures line there for the county general fund, I also included that million that you had set aside for like the roof and the tuck pointing and that. I included that as an expenditure to kind of just subtract that away since you guys had set that aside for the building project. So it's not accounted for in this because I didn't really think it should be. It's not really a surplus of cash. It's allocated to something else, so. If you choose to do an opt-out resolution, that has to be done by the fifteenth of this month.
Yeah.
So I wanted to kind of get that discussion started.
And it looks as if at least the six hundred thousand dollar opt-out is gonna be an appropriate number for us, at least, to maintain some appropriate cash balance. Projected cash balance because it, it doesn't take much. Takes another year like we had a couple of years ago with extreme highway damage to use up a lot of extra funds. And the, the jail problem is going to be, you know, it's not, I, I know you've got some pretty good projected numbers, but it's hard to project human behavior, see how much load you're going to actually have in the jail.
If you don't mind, I'm coming on that a little bit. One thing that you should be aware of is the, the projection I have is, is based on the possibility of Union County not continuing to take all of our inmates because we are having quite a bit of savings. Our, our transport costs are quite a bit less. For example, in June, we spent something like eighty-five dollars on gas transporting inmates to Union County where you could take that times four if we'd had to go to Sioux Falls. And actually a little more than that. I estimate it would have been four hundred dollars for June just for gas if we'd have gone to Sioux Falls. The Union County inmates, their boarding rate is sixty-five dollars a day where it's eighty in Yankton and just dollars away from, actually pennies away from a hundred dollars in Sioux Falls. So I projected it at eighty-five dollars a day, just on the hopes that we can keep it under that. So you might see numbers coming in throughout these next few months saying, wow, Andy is way high on these, these estimates, and that's why they are. And, and we're gonna do everything we can to save every dollar every day we can. But the chances there that could cost a lot more if Union County suddenly has a spike in their own population and turns us away.
Personally, I must, having with the landfill and recycling, there were a lot of projections, which I always felt it was a crystal ball. And I feel we're a little bit in that position on this one too. It has the potential of being much higher than our projection, and I, I'd rather be safe than sorry. And I tend to support the seven hundred and fifty thousand option, which gives us some more room, depending on what happens. If we don't spend it all, we don't spend it all, we can use it for what, hopefully for the building or et cetera, but.
I think it's worth noting too, if you guys do go, you know, say that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar opt-out for, I don't know, five years, if you find the next year that we're not using it, you don't want to take that full seven fifty, you don't have to.
Well, we can just opt out for a year.
Yeah, you could just do it for a year, you know. It's, it's completely up to you. You can set the number of years, and if you find that you don't need it all, you don't have to take it all.
So this, on the six hundred thousand dollar option, the thirteen point, or the estimated cash balance is one point one three million. Does that take into consideration where we're gonna have to supplement Andy's budget this year?
No.
What do you think, Andy, on that number for the next six ones, roughly?
I don't have those notes in front of me, but I recall when we took into account the savings from meals, it was gonna be something about a hundred and twenty-five thousand. That'll be coming up short this year. I think it was a little under that in the teens, but a hundred and eighteen.
I think one eighteen is the number you projected then. I do remember that number.
Yeah, and that was taken into account the meal savings.
That bumps us back to the seven hundred fifty, though.
Yeah.
Because otherwise our, our percentage will be twelve percent, thirteen next year.
Yeah.
At six hundred thousand. But then that doesn't include
my request for...
Some combination of cutting the non, some of the non-mandated stuff too, so.
But the numbers for next year are, I'm anticipating the entire year, so.
But I'm trying to figure out where we're actually gonna be next year after this year.
Gotcha, right.
Yeah, that doesn't take in, that, that's just taken in that we opt out for the whole seven hundred and fifty thousand instead of taking any cuts in there.
Right.
Right? That's the way I read it, but.
And just following the current inmate list, you're not giving me more fuzzies that we're gonna be low. We're talking twenty about every day, it looks like.
Yeah, we are, it, it is going back up toward twenty. I, you know, I, I would hope that it'll stabilize out, but I really don't expect that. In twenty nineteen, we're, we're running in those mid twenties pretty commonly, and I expect we'll get back to that. And nice thing is though, since we are maintaining ourselves as a holdover, there's a lot of one-and-two dayers that don't go. But we keep them here and, and save some money that way. But, but I expect that we're gonna be housing, you know, in closer to twenty throughout next year. Right now, we still have a couple out on house arrest. And, and so the, the total population, you see, we don't have quite that many housed elsewhere. But I expect it to go up. That's, I was figuring these numbers on twenty, twenty inmates a day.
That house arrest, was that just a COVID thing that, that will go away, or?
I, I think it'll, it'll diminish when we're able to start allowing work release again. Because that, they were mainly doing that on people that would have had work release, but I couldn't accept work release into the jail with COVID because they're gonna every day bring in what, you know, sort of virus and, and exposure. And when we think that COVID's not a problem and I can get some repairs made to the, some of the old cell blocks, then maybe I can take work release again. And, and I hope to do that pretty soon. Problem is, is trying to get contractors coming to work for you.
Do you have that budget somewhere?
No. So that will be as, you know, within my repairs budget, I hope to keep it in there. I just don't have the numbers.
Okay.
Because I can't get estimates. And so, that, it might be a, a small projects at a time. And I'll just do that within the current budget, is my plan.
Okay.
If I understand this right, we can opt out for one year, correct?
You can do it, yeah, one year at a time.
And then you just, and so the next year, you have to come back and do the same thing we're doing here. I guess my idea is maybe that's what we should do. It's opt-out one year at a time and see how it goes instead of going like five years down the line, or three or whatever. I think one year, it, it sends a message to the people that we're actually trying to be, you know, responsible for what the money we're using for. And I, and I still think that even if we decide to opt out for the seven hundred fifty thousand or the six hundred, whichever one, that we still look at making some cuts. I think we need to look at making some cuts in some areas.
So can we fill that number in next year preparing?
Yeah.
So can you email out a list of the non-mandated programs with the dollar amount to us?
I can do that.
Then we can, and that gives everybody a week to look at it, see what, what's there, and we'll make the decision on Tuesday then to what to opt out for.
One of the known bumps though, that, that we have is, is the jail, extra jail expenditures until we can build one of our own. So that's probably in the range of five years, isn't it? As close we can tell before we can actually run people in. And that's one of the reasons that that five years kind of, of sticks in my mind, that if we don't ask for it for multiple years, what if we get out and have to re-up, say, year two or year three? And then we can't muster the votes that we need to, to do that if it, if the re-up were to be voted down.
So they'd have to, they'd have to refer it to a vote?
Correct.
Well, I mean, that should be an easy one to explain. We either, we either opt out or we go bankrupt.
Yeah.
In, in two years.
Yes.
There, there's no other option there. I mean, people aren't gonna get paid and offices will close. I'm just wondering, you know, I'm, I'm afraid that if we tie in for five years also, what if we can lower it, or what if we have to go higher?
Yeah.
I don't know how that works if, if you did a five-year, six hundred thousand and it wasn't enough or it was too much.
You'd just have to do another opt-out resolution. I mean, we do have townships that have two opt-outs.
Right.
Because they found that one, you know, wasn't enough. But yeah, and there's always that chance that it can get referred to a vote, you know, and we could end up with an election again, no matter what, so.
But I'm...
People waiting. What's that, Phyllis?
I was gonna say I'm more comfortable with at least two years, though. Having to go through the whole process and explain why we only did it for a year and then re-upping, this is obviously going to be needed for at least two years. And if we don't need as much the second year, we can adjust, but.
You mean if we just do it a year at a time?
Well.
Opt-out for two years.
Opt-out for two years.
If you opt out for two years, you can't adjust in the second year.
Okay. I, I think a one-year opt-out, given the amount of uncertainty right now, I mean, a one-year opt-out just seems the most, the most sensible. You know, we're, we're gonna learn a lot. I, I, I think Andy's gonna learn a lot this year about how, how it works. And, you know, I'd, I'd hate to, to go back and change an opt-out or, you know, have an embarrassing surplus, right, at the end of a year. You know, the, the, yeah.
But even if we overshot by a two hundred thousand, that's still not gonna get us back to where we normally operate.
Right. Yeah, we'd have to do another opt-out, but it would be lower than the previous year. And I, that's not a bad outcome.
Because basically, just because you have it, doesn't mean you have to spend it.
That's right.
You don't, you don't, I mean, you don't have to use the whole thing.
Right. But then I, but then, you know, there's a sense that we've overtaxed people, right? And so I'd, I'd rather be conservative about how much we ask people to, to spend.
I agree.
This first one's gonna be tricky to predict. There's no doubt about that. So, I mean, even, even if we were to get the approval to build a jail tomorrow, and it's still gonna be a couple of years. So the next, next couple of years are still gonna be really uncertain.
Another thing is that the, the state of the jail right now is intended to lighten the load on the jail and lessen the impact of the deficiencies on inmates that are in the jail because they're not here very long. But there's nothing saying that we still couldn't have a lawsuit against us, and the court's still coming in and shutting us down further to where then our, our costs would go up from what we're doing. So I, I feel like we've done a, a very reasonable compromise in terms of that. And I don't believe that the court would shut us down for the, for the duration that we're holding these inmates. They're not being deprived. But it's still a possibility. But I think we really got ahead of, of what happened in Woolworth County. You know, I think that that would have been us if we hadn't done what we did. And, but that didn't say it isn't gonna happen. So I, I, I think the numbers that we have are, are pretty safe. And, and I agree with Betty, you don't want some embarrassing surplus and have overtaxed people to the point where you just got a big bank account. But I don't think we're gonna have that. And, and it'd be great if we did, though, and then we could adjust future years based on that. But I don't think it's gonna happen. And we have to be ready for it, so you're not, don't have me coming in and ask for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars next year in June, so. You know, I've missed it by that much. But we have to be ready for that.
And the timeline is tricky. You have to pass your opt-out by July fifteenth, but, you know, your tax levy requests don't happen until October. So in a situation like this where we don't really know what's gonna happen, we won't know until halfway through next year what the jail budget's gonna look like. Just guess. It's tricky.
Terms of the structure of the budget.
In terms of the structure of the budget, I don't know if this would be a good time or not, but I know I talked to Travis a little bit about it and Carrie a little bit about it, but, and this isn't my budget hearing or anything, but in my auto-budget, I had, I told the commission a few years ago, I kind of start bringing things up a few years out, and I'm gonna do that again this year of future needs. And, but I had mentioned to you that I thought we should be considering trading two cars a year instead of one car a year because we're driving our cars too long, we're getting too many miles, it become unreliable. And it, it really affects our ability to complete our tasks. And so I had suggested we replace two cars a year. Travis had an idea that I think is entirely reasonable. Probably the way to go is do it instead of running the cars nine years or, you know, four years. We do it, run them roughly six years by doing a car and a half a year. And that means we would have to do like with the ambulance, you'd have to budget for a car and a half a year. And then on one year, like, for example, in twenty twenty-two, we would replace one car, and twenty twenty-three, replace two, and, and so on. And I think that's a good way to go. And if, and, but I don't know, in terms of preparing the budget, if Carrie needs to create a fund for that or how that works. But I wanted to mention that now before we get too far down the road and wish we had talked about it earlier.
And the car and a half a year was just trying to tiptoe that fine line of getting, getting the most out of that car.
Right.
Before we start spending a lot of money on it.
Yeah, and I agree. I think that at times if we trade out cars of four years, we might be letting some gems go. And, but at six years, I think we'll rung all the good, the good time out of the cars. And in those last few years, sometimes it's just a matter of keeping them on the road. Then what happens is the newer cars are picking up extra miles because the other ones in the shop. So now we have, like we have right now, we have a relatively newer car that's got a lot of miles on it. If you guys remember that Crown Vic, I kept talking about how bad shape it was in and how it was off the road for a good part of its last year. And that, that other car got most of those miles, and now they're out of whack on the age of the car and the miles that are on them. And I think we can avoid that if we can get rid of them at around six years, because that's really when you start seeing it happen. And we have the van in the mix now, and even though it's not an emergency response vehicle, I sure don't want that van breaking down on the highway full of inmates. And so we, we have to make sure that's reliable too.
But the van makes it, what, nine vehicles that you have?
Nine vehicles, yeah.
So that replaces the van every six years also.
I'd be real comfortable with that, so. And I hope you are, but I just wanted to bring it up now or other, you know, way at the end of the budget process, you start realizing like we missed an opportunity or a, a, if there's some, I don't know. This isn't my job in terms of what Carrie does, and, but I don't want her to be surprised by anything. She's aware of this conversation, though.
That'll make, on the van, it'll make a lot of difference on whether you're going to have to be running to Sioux Falls versus Halt Point or or Yankton too. Those miles will pile up a lot faster. About how many miles do you project that it'll have on six, six years out? Any idea at all?
I haven't done that math.
Yeah.
I could do some estimates here. I think we bought it with something in the sixty thousand range it was used.
Yeah.
But yeah, if you make, I, I don't have those numbers. I just make a guess in my head right now, but I can come up with that for you.
Most.
That all changes too if we get a jail built in the next two and a half.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, you might find that we don't need it. Or, well, if we're across town or even across street, we probably will use it.
Yes.
All but daily, but it won't get the miles.
Yes. Yeah, I, I used to use federal vehicles quite a bit, and they, they replaced on a, a per-mile basis. They would, well, this was back in the eighties and nineties, and of course, you'd only really expected a vehicle to run to a hundred to a hundred and fifty at best. And they would start the replacement process at sixty thousand. And that may be something we would think, think about, see what, see how the miles pile up and use that years down the road as a better indicator how often we ought to be replacing vehicles.
We, we look at, like with our patrol cars, we, we average about thirty thousand miles per year per car. And whether they, whoever has them, just different shifts and different rotations call for more miles. But then we find some of our cars, like the one assigned to school resource officer, doesn't pick up as many miles. And so we see things like that happening, but on average, that, that's about what we get. For the transports, we'll just see. It's just too, too early on for me to tell you.
So you're shooting for about a hundred and eighty to two hundred thousand miles per car is about what you're actually doing?
Yeah. Right now, they, they rarely go out under a hundred and forty, but they're, they're anywhere in there.
Yeah.
We used to, when I started, we traded them at sixty to ninety thousand because there were only three cars of them. And we traded one a year. Now we're still trading one a year, but we've added quite a bit.
Yeah.
Anything else for the budget? Till next week? Should we start next week then on the budget, too?
Yeah, I, I need to get your big booklets together and stuff, but. I was just kind of, you know, looking for a little bit of direction before I try to put those all together, so.
So what direction are we going?
She's gonna send out the non-mandated stuff.
Yeah.
And their numbers, and then, then we gotta try and figure out where the, where the opt out number's gonna be. We have to make that decision next Tuesday.
And I can kind of prepare the booklets, you know, with that six hundred thousand number in mind, if, you know. If that would be helpful to you guys and. Whatever else you decide to do.
That sounds good.
That would just be kind of a bonus at that point, you know.
So I guess the resolution for opt out will be next week, then? And any building, well, you know, Dick's on, isn't he?
Yep.
Dick, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Morning.
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 So we had talked last, last week, I think. About putting a air exchanger in the courthouse. Beckenhour.
Yes, and actually what I did was, I, I talked to J L G as well, because there's, we need to get some. We need an engineer involved to figure out how we do it. Because it won't just be a, probably a piece of equipment, there may have to be some, some modifications on, on how you get the ducting in for it. So I, I talked to J L G and they're gonna get us a proposal.
Okay. If you don't mind, I thought I mentioned something that happened last week, maybe Dick might have some insight on it, but. We saw, saw in the second floor offices and the auditor's office, and then in the treasurer's office, I got a call up there, they had water dripping from the third floor. And that was the air conditioner units on the third floor. I'm sure it's temperatures higher there, they're just running nonstop, they were. Had way too much condensation. I found in the judge's office, visiting judge's office, it isn't occupied all the time, the floor was wet to about three feet out from the, from the air conditioner. And there was mold or mildew growing in the carpet there. And anyway, so it's dripping down into the, through the holes in the ceiling, into the electrical boxes, the, and, and then out of those, so. And I'm gonna guess that's an air exchange issue, all that humidity's still in the building and, and, and with the nature of the building, with the third floor being where the heat is. Sure, they just run more up there, probably ran nonstop, and so I don't know what they did, I think they shut one down in the courtroom, I shut the judge's office off, so I'm sure she's. Gonna be one today at this court.
Joan's working on seeing if she can get those unclogged and, and everything herself, if not, we'll. Have them come out and fix it for us, but it seems like we have that issue every year.
Hers, Lexi's is making a funny noise, too.
Okay. Got that checked out. We struggle with those. You know, we struggle with keeping them unplugged, we struggle with keeping them from growing mold inside, and it's just not. It's not good. Every year we have the same issues.
What days did you guys have problems?
Treasurer's office had the drip on Friday.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was Friday.
For the auditor's office.
Okay, yeah. So to say, I'm sure that it was running pretty good, I mean, we started our trial on Monday morning and then wrapped up. We're just in about five thirty on Wednesday, so. I'm sure they ran, and then judge did have them deliberate in the courtroom and section stuff off because. Of how small the jury room is, so. Closed off that hallway there so they can have access to the restroom in the jury room. Once deliberations began, of course, and then. They went back and forth, but I'm sure it ran. Not slightly excited with this hot as it was and the courtroom being utilized. That whole time.
There'd be probably about a day or so's delay before they'd notice it down there from the peak of the problem.
I wonder if there's a condensate line running from that, from those units.
There should be.
There's a, a very small, like, clear plastic, one of those flexible clear plastic tubes. That runs in there to like a drip pan. And the tubes plug up, the drip pan gets full, and, you know, so we're constantly. In there with a screwdriver or something, trying to get those lines unclogged and so that it'll drain properly, but sometimes. Just doesn't work well.
Yeah. We, we'll look at that, we'll, J L G, you know, look at this, you know, they're talking to their engineer on it, and. They'll likely come out, we'll have them look at that as well, so we can see if that's what's all, what's the root of the problem.
It might be good to replace those condensate lines if we can get to them, you know, that, have someone replace those. Because once they get to the point where you've got to use a screwdriver, a coating, or whatever, it reached up, up in them, they keep plugging back further and further. Within that line, and if we could replace them, that would help us maybe for the next year or so.
We do get.
That could be, that could be an annual maintenance thing, too, just replace condensate lines on each of those.
Could be. We do get where the air actually comes out, the little vent slots, we get mold buildup in those, too, that we have to clean out periodically and.
They're better than nothing, but are poor designed.
Yeah. And I can't imagine that's too healthy to have the mold growing right there where the air's coming out and breathing that in. For what it's worth, our, our mail delivery person commented last week how stagnant the air was in the courthouse and. Said, gosh, I just hate coming in here, there's just no air movement. She goes, I don't know how you guys work in here every day.
Yeah, pretty soon we've got to start getting a canary in each box.
Like, I, I think redoing the HVAC will solve a lot of problems.
That's how you can be designed to fit in here. Yeah, what it's looking like.
If you recall, well, it's a few decades ago now, there was window air conditioners out of pretty much every window in the courthouse. I think it was Lyman County courthouse I went by, I think they're the ones, they still have window air conditioners, and at least then you're just forcing that air exchange. And that's. Difficult, but maybe that would be the better way to go than, to get rid of that. Some years ago, they, well, it was a few window replacement projects ago, they. Replaced all the windows and got rid of the window air conditioners.
Um, sorry. Is this going to be under the COVID facilities funding? Is that where you're looking at this?
Yeah, we're hoping to.
Would be that American Rescue Plan money?
Yeah, um, since Andy's there, he may know more, but it might not be a bad idea to maybe look at the public safety center. As well. Even though we're, we have the different units, forced air through everything. The, they use the ceilings as the cold air return. So you're sucking everything from everybody's office back, back in, so the building itself is kind of. One big lung, so to speak, instead of individualizing returns out. I don't know if that's something you wanna look into or not, but, you know, if, because I, you know, it's all gonna depend on. Dumping money into a building if we, doesn't plan to be. Still attached in five years, I don't think it's necessary, though. Just another thing to think about, anyway.
And then, Dick, we talked about purchasing property. You wanna, you wanna go into the details of what we talked about?
Sure. Just talked, talked about, you know, the different options on that, I see Steve Waller's on, on the phone as well. And I know the committee was looking at, at different sites. Steve, do you have an update on that?
I think the commission made a decision last week to select a lot across from Walmart.
Oh, okay.
Travis?
Well, we haven't formally made that decision yet. We were gonna have, when I talked to Dick, we were gonna have, uh. We're gonna get a Realtor.
Oh, okay, yes, okay.
That part.
Right, okay, on that part, yeah, I, I, yeah, I spoke with, with, with Bender in Sioux Falls, that's often who we, we team with. But one thing I kind of challenged with, with Travis, I said, do you need a real estate broker? Because, you know, if you're doing residential, you've got lots of, lots of, you know. Law you, you follow when you do commercial, I mean, it's a contract that a lawyer writes up. Purchase agreement on it. And I, I just kinda question if we need to have a, a broker, I mean, we, we can help with it, but in, in most, in most towns your size. It seems to go better if it is, you know, people that, you know, local people that the seller is familiar with. And obviously we need, you know, need an attorney involved, too. I mean, Lexi could jump in here, but, you know, we need a, a, a contract, purchase agreement, a contract. I don't know what your thoughts are on that, but, and we can, we, we team with Bender in Sioux Falls routinely, and they're, you know, a large commercial real estate group. And we sure can, sure can help with it, but I'm not sure we're providing great service on it because of what's, you already know the property and. You know, an attorney may be, you know, a better choice to help with the transaction.
So that's something that I would just recommend, you guys look at hiring someone to do for you, if that's what you wanna do, I don't have time to do that, and I don't feel comfortable doing that at this juncture. So I hope this month to really push to get our position filled. We got through that trial, and then before we have a couple more in August, I need to work on that, but. I think that would be something, if that's where you wanna go, instead of a Realtor, they would take, you know, a percentage of fees anyway, so if you, it's better to go with an attorney. And. Dick, I don't know if you would recommend someone, I mean, is that something that you would recommend someone?
Yeah, we sure, you know, we've worked with, with Jim Widerick, Woods Fuller. That's who initially talked to you about this. Uh, but yeah, we could, we could, how about I circle back with you, Lexi, and we, I'll come up with you.
Okay, and Jim did our contracts with our architecture firm and construction manager, so I've been familiar with. Things with us. You know, I can't think of anybody. Locally that wouldn't maybe have some conflict troubles to recommend, so that's, that would be more, you know, like, Jim's the city attorney. You know, he's one of the first ones that comes to my mind, but he represents the city, and so I just don't know, I don't know that that would necessarily be a problem for us, but I think that would probably be something to. I just make, might make more sense.
To just go out of the area.
Yeah. But if you all have someone else that you want to consider, or, or, whatnot, we sure can discuss that, too.
So, does a lot of local real estate transactions, I think of Craig Thompson as somebody who does a lot of local real estate transactions.
Margaret Crew.
My, oh, well, Margaret Crew does, yeah, I mean, she does all the title stuff, she's, she's, she's amazing.
Actually, when I sold my house myself, personally, actually I went to Margaret Crew.
Yeah.
And she did all the title and everything, she drew up the contract, she did the whole thing.
I've done a few things with and without Realtors, without Realtors, I was just going market.
Yeah.
I think that's a good direction to go. Local, and obviously you'll have an attorney, you know, review it, but if there's somebody local that's, that's. It's familiar and typically does commercial transactions, that would be a good person to go to.
Yeah, I mean, the, the other question is negotiating a price, and that really is what, what, what Realtors do. And so, you know, we, we've got to figure out how to negotiate a price, I mean, we're not, I, I, I'm not an expert in that. You know, I mean, I think that is why, you know, Realtors are, are hired, and normally the Realtor is paid for by the, the seller. So I, I'm not sure that's a cost of, I think it's a cost to the seller.
Well, the sellers that I've talked to said if you hire a Realtor, just add six percent of the price, we're not paying it. And as far as negotiations. Any Realtor I've ever had to deal with goes to the seller, or comes to the buyer and says, this is what they want, this is what I'll give them. They're just a middle, they're just a go-between. And they get paid. Half, they're, they're facilitating the transactions. Yeah, I mean, they've got the seller's best interest in mind. But as far as a negotiation, it's still gonna be, what are you willing to sell for, what are you willing to pay? Go ahead. Then you just, you just base that off of. Other transactions that have happened in the area.
Well, I guess we're down to, you never heard back from Munger. We know where, where Larry Brady's at.
Three point nine.
Okay.
On Larry's.
Larry's, Larry's at three point nine, he went up. Okay, well, we know, we definitely know where he's at there, and the only actual piece is that piece up there. And we know that that's what, about six hundred and fifty thousand, roughly, six fifteen. So I don't know if there's a lot there to negotiate, because they're not gonna come down any further, that's where they're at.
Right.
I, I think that we're to the point here is. I guess I don't see having a Realtor of anything in that case, I just assume. Deal with them that way, plus they're Realtors themselves, who you're dealing with, and so I, I guess that's where my point is, I don't think we have any other options. I mean, we're kind of, where we're at, you know.
Well, should, should we at least talk to Scott Munger?
Or not, it's not.
I'm Stan Munger.
He won't return my call.
So he tried. I agree with you, but I don't think that's, the guy doesn't return a call to you, obviously he's not too interested in selling. And if he does come back, he's probably gonna come back at such a big price. But, yeah, if they take it, I'll sell it, but if not.
Hadn't the committee actually spoken to him, him earlier? A year ago, and it was a no?
Yeah.
His mother was still alive.
Oh, right, okay.
No at that time, but now they've also sold forty acres of their ritual house. So I don't know how much more they're really willing to sell right now, though. If he was, if he was interested in selling, I think he would.
He would have called.
And he might be busy, too, he took the month of July off, June.
Do we wanna maybe go into an executive session for contract negotiation purposes? I mean, I, if you don't want to, we don't need to, but.
Which contract?
Well, I mean, if you're, I mean, if you're looking to negotiate a land contract, which is the direction I think everything has been set here. You're looking to secure an attorney to draw up a contract for those purposes, and while I don't. I'm, I, I don't have an intention of drafting that for you at this juncture, I think I can still provide you some legal advice, you know. I have had some reservation and other tension, and one of the things I said to Travis was, I look at an executive session as. Like a closed-door meeting with your attorney, and so when you invite other folks in who are not. County citizens, I think Dick pretty squarely falls under the umbrella of that, and the folks in this room right now, who are stakeholders for the county in this regard. But. You know, my opposition of other executive session discussions was if we were inviting other participants into the room. That are not members of this, this shareholder, I think that defeats the point of the executive session. But if you all don't want to do that, I mean, I was just throwing that out there. And I'm not hearing that, so.
Confused on the executive session. And what we could.
Yeah, my, my, my only question is, is, you know, if, if we've, I, I mean, it makes sense to have an executive session if we've actually determined that there's a piece of land. That we want to negotiate about, and, you know, I, I have this question. And, um, you know, I, I have this question in my mind as to whether, you know, we need to talk to Munger. Um, and find out if he's really not willing to sell, um, unless somehow we think this, this other piece of land. Um, north of Walmart is better, um, but. I don't know, for me, there's still that open question that is probably worth, worth answering before we. Um, narrow down discussion, um, to the negotiation and contract development, um, level.
Any idea how I make people talk to you?
Uh, I mean, so that, that's why you have a real estate agent, right? Because that's what real estate agents do for you. Um, they, you know, they, 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 they negotiate, they talk to people, they find out under what circumstances they'd be willing to sell. You know, I, I, how, did you call him once, twice?
I called him a couple of times.
Yeah.
On his cell phone, this is the number he's given.
Yep.
I mean, it's him, so it's a Stan Munger. But even a realtor can't make people talk to.
Well, they can't, and just be a little bit of a devil's advocate here, you know, part of where I was going with the negotiation is what we talk about. You know, I, I would encourage, and I'll say this in the open meeting, then, um, I would encourage not. Not positioning yourself or conceding anything from a financial standpoint of what someone will or won't do, particularly if we don't discuss things with them. So, in an open meeting identifying, well, they aren't going to move on price, and this is what we're gonna do, like. From an attorney perspective, and I'll put this out there, I'm not willing to concede that at all. And I think until you have your agent, whether that be a lawyer or whoever identify that. You know, one of the things that I frequently do from a standpoint, if I've tried to call somebody, um, a couple of different times, is I'll send him a letter identifying. Um, we want to have this discussion with you and please contact us or let us know a time that works for you. Obviously, if you get asked all those options and they just don't reply, that's, that's a, a different situation and trying to reach out. I'm not saying you haven't done that, Travis, um, but I think having your agents. Come to the table in that regard, there's some, I mean, there's a reason you guys like me to send a letter sometimes. There's a level of authority that comes with, like, we're serious about this, and I'm not saying that it isn't when the chairman of the board is reaching out. That obviously is a extension of that as well, but, um. But if you all, you know, are interested in a specific parcel and you think you've got it for a better price than you're gonna get for other things, I mean, that's your decision to make as well. But then it does sound to me like you're drilling down on contract negotiations.
Well, they sold the forty acres across the road for what, a million dollars, what's that? I think I've heard, I haven't heard the exact dollars, but I think that's a million. And that was for forty acres, this is thirty-two acres on this side. Doubt if they're gonna sell it for less than a million. That would be my guess.
Yeah.
And I'm just saying, I'm not trying to, I understand exactly what you're saying, and we could send him a letter. Again, it doesn't mean he has to answer it at all.
Absolutely.
And that's, that's pretty easy to do. I just don't want to sit here and keep waiting for Stan Munger to make a move. He doesn't make a move, and all of a sudden somebody comes in and says, you know what? I heard the county might be interested in that piece of ground at thirty-eight acres, I'm gonna go buy it, and I'll give them more than what, what they're asking for it now. That's my only thoughts, and then pretty soon you're out the bar.
And that's why we have real estate agents. I, I just don't think a commission as a whole. No, I mean, I just don't think as a commission, it makes sense to do a land deal, the five of us. I mean, I, I think it makes sense to have, uh, to have an agent, and it could be a lawyer. Um, but it does make sense to have some kind of agent, um, you know, assisting us. Because I, I think the discussion we're having right now is something that ought to be had behind closed doors. Made, done by a professional, right? I mean, we're, we're, we're sort of, yeah. I, it, it just doesn't make sense to me that the five of us try to negotiate a deal.
One, that's our job. That's what we're here for.
I think what I'm saying is that, um, a five-person legislative body cannot do as good a job. As a single individual, um, you know, making phone calls and so on. Um, that's my opinion, and I respect that you disagree with that. Um, but I, I, I just don't think as, as a group of five, we're, we're very well suited to do that. I mean, land negotiation is a specialty.
Not really. I've, on my properties, I've negotiated them myself, and then you get the attorney involved, right, the paperwork.
You know, that's, you know, I guess I would say that my experience on it is if it's a bigger city and there's a lot of competition, you've got multiple part, uh. Projects where you compete one against another, it sounds like that may not be the, the case here. That's oftentimes when a broker, uh, you know, is involved, and our, our company does that, it's just I, I'm really hesitant to do that in for a million. You've got relationships, um, and, uh, there's, there's not, like, there's a half a dozen proj- properties we're looking at. So that's the reason I suggested, and we can do it with Bender in, in Sioux Falls, but I, I questioned bringing in an outsider to do it. But maybe that is the right thing to do, or, or bring in, you know, having an attorney do it, because that's, it's, um. You know, we need, we need somebody involved, either attorney or broker, you know, to handle, uh, the paperwork on it. And typically on commercial transactions, there's a, there's a lawyer that's involved, no matter, no matter how it's handled from the brokerage side.
If, if I can, um, where did we get to with Margaret Crew? I know, I'm very comfortable with. Approaching her as a representative, she fits all of the bills.
Usually she's that independent third party that does.
We can ask, and I, on commercial property, I'd be surprised if you. This is, feels like a double negative, I believe on commercial property, it would be different than a residential for her. Residential, yes, she'd want to be the third party, on a commercial, it's just very different. And it can be done simpler.
Yep, I agree with you.
So maybe that's our next step, maybe we get ahold of Margaret and see what she can tell us, and then she can, she can put contact Stan Munger. She might have, she might go it first. Yeah, there's probably a better than even chance that she's already been working on that.
Yes.
Previous sale and, uh, uh, have contact with either Stan. Or whoever's representing him, uh, for that previous sale. So we may get some other means of contacting him, uh, by working our way back through that, that sale. Uh, to get ahold of him, other than just send him a letter or whatever, uh. We might get lucky, it'd be really, I think it's really valuable for us to have at least a second piece of property in play. Especially one that's on this side of, of the highway. So. Trying to stay within the bounds of what I would want to do in open meeting.
Yeah, well, the real estate sign is still up.
Yeah.
Out there, so.
Yeah.
Know who they're dealing with.
On, oh, on the.
On Munger's.
On Munger's? And you tried to contact him through that number then, or?
No, I had his cell phone.
Okay. Dakota really?
I don't think it's anybody local.
Maybe we ought to give it a shot through that, that phone number if there's one on that sign.
Yeah, I'm sure, I mean, well, the company name's on the sign, so whoever's, know where the company is.
So I, I think it, there's real value in at least keeping one more property in play. Uh, especially if it's got another advantage or so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think the, the, uh, uh, other thing is that if, I mean, if they've already got an agent representing them. Um, if we got an agent representing us, it doesn't increase or decrease the fee, they're gonna have to pay the fee anyway. Um, but what happens is that our agent gets a percentage of that fee and their agent gets a percentage of that fee. But the fee doesn't increase to the seller, so. Yeah, if he's already got it listed with an agent, it's no cost to us or them for us to have an agent.
He doesn't have this property listed, though.
Oh, wait, but. Munger?
Yeah, it's the one they've already, it's got a sale pending sign, north of nineteen, or north of the bypass on nineteen. That sale pending sign is still there, that one we approved the plat on last week for the planning and zoning. So.
Well, I think we need to talk to Margaret. Get her for a representative for us, I, I, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, if she's willing to do it, yeah, normally she's, she's the neutral third party that, um, affects the transaction and does all the legal work. She is an attorney, and I think she also has a real estate license.
So talk with Margaret and call the company that's listed Munger's, I think that's a good idea.
I do too. Yeah, I like it too, having two options, I just don't want to see one get away from us, because we're way too long.
Yeah, that's right.
You know? Been down that line. He hesitates. Yep, and they're done that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's very true.
Yeah.
Any other building discussion? Thanks, Dick. Vouchers and payroll, if I could see those.
Yeah. Move to approve them. Second.
A motion of second, any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion passes. Fireworks display permits, fireworks unlimited on, uh, July twenty-first.
This one is, um, Chad Grunwald's wedding, and so it'll be out there at his property. Um, Tom had asked me to relay that they will be wetting the ground down beforehand. Afterwards, and they'll have water tanks, you know, available in case anything would happen. He said he doesn't want to take any chances.
So I'd be curious to know what Lane, um, what Lane's opinion is on the fireworks display under the. Current weather conditions.
I'm okay with it, uh, we've done it before, uh, with differing events around the county. Um, you know, where they're at, it's mainly a field. Um, I'm assuming there's lightening off on the road where the proposed campground is somewhere in there, but. Uh, I'm okay with it, where you guys don't have a burn ban in place, so. I guess, well, that's my answer, I guess.
Well, then I, I'd move to approve.
I'll second.
I've motioned a second, any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A little slow. Do we have any kind of caveat if a burn place should, burn ban should be put in place? By that time? Don't we just say it's fine?
Um, that would probably be an Alexis answer, I don't know.
Thank you very much.
I think the simplest thing would be, we just put it on here.
Yeah.
If a burn van becomes in effect, this becomes no one void.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Can we do that, this attorney? Contingent.
He's there to defend our, our.
I, I would propose. Uh, an amendment to that motion, uh, that. This permit is contingent on no burn ban being in place at the time, at the date of this firework display.
Okay, I, I accept that amendment.
And I'm gonna let you write that on here, Kara, so we can read it.
Yeah.
What's that, Lane?
What, what, what's the date of it?
The thirty-first of July.
Or nine, nine thirty at night.
Yeah, uh, depend on, hopefully we get some rain tonight and. You know, the, the extreme droughts backed off a little bit to the west, so a little bit more rain will help stay that away. For a couple more weeks or so, anyway.
Any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On the same sign, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we've got Lane's, um. Special project award.
Yeah, we've already been through this once, um, it was to outfit the truck and the state miscalculated things. So I had to resubmit, uh, basically, we're gonna get another couple hundred dollars. So, for a signature and get a couple hundred dollars for a signature is not a bad deal.
I move to approve the grant expansion, whatever.
Amendment.
Amendment.
Second.
A motion of a second, any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, say aye.
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 Close same sign, motion passes. Nothing for joint jurisdiction, we don't think we have anything for executive session. Does anybody have anything else? We're at the end of the agenda, so take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion of second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
If I find anything else in that fireworks yard, you know, I'd everything.